We're ready. You ready?
You are ready, Jonathan. Please go live.
The regular meeting of the Desert Community College District Board of Trustees is now called to order at 9:31 a.m. Today's meeting is being transmitted via live stream from the district's website at www.collogeofthedesert.edu. President Kennaman, could you conduct roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir.
Not vote.
Student trustee Chavez Chides. Trustee Stefan. Trustee Perez.
Trustee Perez has notified me. He is on his way.
Thank you. Trustee Wilson.
Present.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton.
Present.
Trustee Yon.
Present. Trustee Sanchez Fulton, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Move to the agenda. Pursuant to government code section 54954.2b2, the board may take action on items of business not appearing on the posted agenda upon determination by two-thirds vote of the board or if less than two-thirds of the members are present. A unanimous vote of present. Need to take immediate action. Need for action came to the attention of the local agency subsequent to the agenda being posted as specified. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to the agenda for July 16, 2020?
There are no changes, Board Chair.
Thank you. The agenda stands confirmed as presented. Moving to approval of meeting minutes. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to the regular meeting minutes of June 18, 2020? Hearing none. They stand approved as presented. Moving to approval of special meeting minutes, are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to the special meeting minutes of July 1, 2020? Hearing none, they stand approved. Public comments. In accordance with Executive Order N-2520 and documents from the California Department of Public Health on gatherings, remote public participation is allowed and being accepted by email to otp@collegeofthedesert.edu and during public comments. Limit of three minutes per person. Julia, have we received any as of now?
No, Board Chair.
Thank you. Okay, Superintendent President Dr. Kennaman for public updates.
Yes, thank you, Trustee Yon. Today I want to share some information related to our international student enrollment. Our current enrollment projection for fall is 71 students. Seventy-five percent of the students reside in the United States. The average enrollment for 2019 was approximately 100 students enrolled in degree programs and in the intensive English academy. And in addition to that, we've been enrolling 35 to 50 visiting Japanese university students annually for a three-week immersion program. Currently, fall 2020 instruction is being taught completely online. And fortunately, the recently announced Immigration and Customs Enforcement decision on limiting F-1 visas to our international students has been reversed. So they will not be impacted. And that concludes my public update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving to written reports. Written reports that were submitted to the Office of the President will be incorporated into the meeting minutes and posted online. If you have not sent over your written report, please do so before the end of business today by emailing Julia Brier in the President's office. Julia, what has been received as of now?
Yes, Board Chair, we've received the ASCOT President's Report, the Foundation Board Report, and a report from CSCE.
Okay, again, could I remind the other reporting groups that these reports are read by the Board and important for us to conduct our business and encouraging these groups to submit the reports by the end of business today?
Mr. Chair, this is Trustee Wilson.
Yeah.
I also just wanted to make a comment. I wanted to really thank those reports, the folks that sent in those reports that we have there. And you're correct, we do read them. So I appreciate the acknowledgement by the CSCE of the Board of Trustees, as well as the Foundation Report and the ASCOT Report. So I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to reports, is student trustee online at this time? Julia is student.
Board Chair, I do not reflect her on the line as of yet.
All right. Please let me know if she does join us and we'll hear her report.
Will do.
Trustee Stefan. And I see trustee Perez has joined us. So trustee.
Yes, thank you.
Good morning. I just wanted to say good morning to all my fellow trustees in the community. This month, things have somewhat quieted down. But I think we all need to keep our focus on what's important, and that's justice for all, as we say in our pledge each and every month that we meet. And I hope that all of our students are getting ready for their fall semester. I know some of our students are engaged in a summer program online. I know these are difficult times, and I wish everyone well, safety, and health, and wellness. And I hope we're all remembering to stay, keep our social distance and ensure the safety of everyone, not just ourselves, during this difficult time. I want to thank everyone at the college from the top down or from the bottom up, because I know we're all working very, very hard to keep our campus going and to ensure that our students do have a quality education while we are in these trying times. So just to say thank you to everyone, wish everyone well, and I hope you're having a wonderful month. I don't know if you watched any of the Fourth of July fireworks on the television set, but I was very happy to see that people were taking a positive attitude and that everyone's becoming involved socially so that we can make improvements throughout our nation, but particularly on all of our home fronts. So again, thank you so much for everything, and thank you for this opportunity to just share some thoughts with the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Perez?
Not much to report. This month has been a little slow. I just want to echo trustee Stefan's comments and also encourage everybody to wear masks, keep social distance, stay safe out there. We are right in the middle of it, and it doesn't seem like it's in sight, but I just want to encourage everybody to keep wearing their mask and stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Wilson?
I would just like to echo both trustee Stefan's remarks and trustee Perez's remarks. And just to add that the Fourth of July, I think trustee Stefan mentioned it, the fireworks. And I really would like to acknowledge and thank the Awa Kaliani tribe for putting on such a fantastic firework show. They were the only one in the area. Most of the cities had decided not to do that because of health concerns. So, you know, I was able to see them from afar, and a lot of cars were parked around the casino area just to come and look at the fireworks and enjoy the meaning of what the Fourth of July is all about. So I really want to thank the tribe for doing that. And that concludes my remarks, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Yes, good morning to all. Would like to also echo my fellow board members on thanking our academic staff, our academic faculty, those our security officers, and those that are still taking care of our community college. I especially want to thank the students who have been very patient with us. And I just want to give a shout out to my students here at the College of the Desert. We care for you. We want you to feel safe. Please take advantage of all the services we have online. This is a big shout out to the students. We have so many services. Please continue to use the app that we have for you. The college, we're a family, and we need for you to feel welcome. We have access to us. Please, if anytime you have questions on anything, call a counselor. I really want to tell our students, we're here to help you. I know we speak for the whole College of the Desert family. And also wanted, I hope everyone had a blessed Fourth of July, and everybody got to enjoy the fireworks. I know in my area, in my city, we had fireworks. Our neighborhood just lit up. It was so beautiful to see that. I want to echo also that everyone, please keep safe, wear a mask, and six-foot distancing. I really want to thank the President to give that update in regards to our international student. That was my concern. Having been an international student myself when I went as an undergraduate, I'm really glad that we are serving those that want to come to our beautiful College of the Desert. During this time, I attended several Zoom meetings as your representative at the California State Trustees. For those that don't know, that's our, I'm your representative for the 115 California Community College. I will be giving a written report on the update and let you know what's going on. Of course, it's about the budget that we're going to be, I'll be writing the report hopefully. Our, I don't know if I see our Ramon, if he's there, but anyway. I just want to tell everyone just about another meeting. It was an India Women's Club meeting that we had and attended a lot of the Zoom chamber meetings. To keep our, please, wear your mask, please do takeouts for our local businesses. Our businesses are suffering. Please, please continue to honor a lot of our businesses here in the Coachella Valley. Thank you so much for this report. I want all of you to keep safe. And this ends my report. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I understand student trustee has joined us. Are you ready to give your report?
Yes.
Please go ahead.
Hello, good morning, everyone. So for today's meeting, I just wanted to thank while I'm sorry. So for today's meeting, I just wanted to remind everyone to to keep taking care, just like everyone else said. I don't know if anyone noticed last meeting, but last meeting, I was feeling sick. I last month, my grandpa passed away, and I had to travel to Mexico where I got sick. And it was not, I just felt really sick, so I really want to just encourage everyone to just keep their safe distance, to not go out without a face mask, to go out when it's necessary, because it's not, it's not a great feeling. And I thank God I didn't have to go to a hospital or anything else. But I know of people that have, so I just want to remind everyone to keep taking care of each other. And that would be it.
And hopefully, you're feeling well now.
Yeah, I'm feeling way better now, thank God.
Thank you. Please take care of yourself.
I will, thank you. I've been home since two months now, so.
This morning's Chronicle of Higher Education news feed had an interesting essay from a professor of, of all things, I didn't know this exists, but pandemic studies, who wrote an interesting essay about pandemics going back to the times of Greece and Rome. And one observation was that we tend to focus so much on the present, which is understandable, focus so much on all the restrictions, which is also understandable, that the one thing that we don't have more attention to, which we should, is how this is going to change the world when we leave this time period. And it's a stimulating essay to think about how the world of education maybe changed significantly when we're out of this time period. And right after I read that essay, I picked up today's LA Times, and the front page story is on participation in online learning in the LA Unified School District. And of course, what we can measure easily is the participation. In other words, number of times online and the participation online. And the difficult thing in the study is the significant economic and ethnic background differences. We need to look at how online learning is serving all communities. Which we need to look at ways to make online better serve all communities. It looks like across the country, this is not being given the attention it needs to be given. And things that are not being given enough attention, I have one final comment. It seems if we listen to news reports that executives, not only in education but in the private sector, are getting a lot of attention in terms of how much extra work the pandemic is causing them. And they've got good PR people, so I want to take some time to say the pandemic has also increased the workload of faculty. Distance learning takes more time. It takes more time to make the experience good for students, as this study from the LA Unified School District shows. So we need to appreciate the extra time all faculty are putting into online learning to make it successful. And we certainly do appreciate their efforts. They are the frontline, and their efforts need to be recognized. President Kennaman, your report?
Thank you, trustee Yon. And I really want to thank our student trustee for sharing with us her experience because I know most know somebody that has been in that situation, but there may be many that aren't familiar. And with you sharing your story, it's a reminder to all of us that we've got to be very, very careful and and take the appropriate precautions. So again, thank you. The only other item I have is we find ourselves in a unique place. The Board of Trustees, they've provided us with fiscal guidelines as we budgeted over the years and as we bring with those guidelines and through the work of all of our staff, it's positioned us with a unique opportunity that very few organizations currently have. And that opportunity is for us to invest in our community so that we can positively impact our workforce and our local economy. We're in a position, like back in 2008, where we made a decision to be aggressive in investment and growth and expansion when others retrenched. And those that retrenched are facing the same choice today. And they are in a position in a way that we are, so that we can truly impact our local community and continue to expand and try to reach more students and develop our workforce. So I appreciate everybody's efforts over the years to make sure that that we are well-positioned, so that we can continue to do good work and to ensure that others are prepared for the jobs of the future. And we know those are going to look a little bit different. And that concludes my update. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be considered for approval by a single vote without discussion. Any board member may request that an item be pulled from the consent agenda to be discussed and considered separately from the, in the action agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? President Kennaman, will you conduct a roll call vote?
Yes. Student trustee Chavez Chides?
Yes.
Trustee Stefan?
Aye.
Trustee Perez?
Aye.
Trustee Wilson?
Aye.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Aye.
Trustee Yon?
Yes, motion carried unanimously. Moving to action agenda, item 10.01. We have no items that were pulled. Moving to 11, 11.01 Board Meeting Dates. Do I have a motion to approve the Board Meeting Dates for a first reading as presented?
So move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, President Kennaman, will you conduct a roll call vote?
Yes, student trustee Chavez Chides?
Yes.
Trustee Stefan?
Aye.
Trustee Perez?
Aye.
Trustee Wilson?
Aye.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Aye.
Trustee Yon?
Yes, motion carried unanimously. Item 11.02 Review Status of Emergency Resolution, Including Actions Taken Pursuant to That Resolution. Do I have a motion to review the status of emergency resolution, including actions taken pursuant to that resolution as presented?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, and I'm not sure that it's easy for Julia to understand who is making the motion. So could you remember to give your name, please?
Okay.
That was.
Trustee Stefan.
Trustee Stefan.
And who seconded?
It's trustee Perez, second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Okay, so at this point, President Kennaman, you have you want to comment on the report of actions that were taken?
Certainly. In your materials, we have the history of what has occurred since we declared a state of emergency. And the report is broken up in sections of major, our primary functional areas within the college. And you can see some of the highlights that I'll just touch on a few. Otherwise, I may be here for reading through this for 30 minutes. But we were successful over a two-week period to migrate and spring to an online delivery system and also for the summer. And we migrated our services, library, student services, counseling, et cetera. Our faculty have, over 300 of them have been trained. And we are certifying them with a distance education certification as part of this training. The financial aid office has developed, implemented a plan for expending the CARES Act funding, which is about $3.5 million for the first round to our students. We continue to provide tutoring services. Our virtual commencement, we sent out around 1,700 graduates care packages that include the cap, tassel, stole, diploma cover, bumper sticker, and a personalized message inside. The foundation has been very supportive in providing emergency funds to students during this time period for all types of needs that they have, and most of those are basic needs. The we've continued with all the functions that the institution would do if we were on campus, with the majority of that being at a distance, using technology, with occasional visits to campus to deal with items that can't be done remotely or that are difficult to be done remotely. Maintenance and operations has done an outstanding job in working on a plan to ensure our campus is safe and it is maintained. That has expanded over the past three weeks with additional staff being essential workers at all our sites. The staff have been trained in protocols on social distancing and on how to provide the type of cleaning that is warranted during this time period. The public safety officers have been really exceptional in their work in maintaining the campuses, maintaining the security of our campuses, but also safeguarding the public from creating an environment where there could be public gatherings that could potentially increase the COVID rates that continue to increase dramatically in Coachella Valley. In addition, in our IT department, of course, you can imagine the degree of work that they've had to deal with with this transition and the training and the providing resources to both faculty, staff, and students. But I think the nice thing about it is that they also provided 1,500 face shields with our 3D printers for essential workers throughout our community. And so And so while there's work around what is our primary mission, we see ourselves also providing some needs of our society, of our community, that is different for us. And, but it's an essential role that we have in this community. We're going to have to make sure staff, all of our staff gets a copy of all of this because since I'm not touching on probably 50% of the items here, I certainly don't want people to feel slighted. But, you know, as you go through here, you can see the types of things that have taken place, including items around our bond program and, and human resources. We continue to, we continue to have people that retire, resign, and then as that occurs, we have about a three-tier level of review on what positions to fill during this time period. And I really thank the executive cabinet for working together because when they make those decisions, I know they work with their direct reports in bringing positions forward, and some get unanimous approval and will move forward with recommendations to the board, and many do not get unanimous approval, and, and we don't move those forward. So we're watching that very closely. But human, human resources has continued to operate mostly remotely with Zoom interviews. You can see a list of positions that have been hired during this time period. And then, of course, our institutional advancement, the public relations office. We've had a lot of messages to update on COVID, both internal to students, external to community. But beyond that, even the important work of celebrating our commencement and their role in making sure that materials are sent and, and that we recognize students and that we have an outstanding virtual commencement ceremony. The other piece you may have noticed, or if you have not received, should receive in the mail, and all of our students have received, an eight-page insert that was in the Desert Sun that listed all of our students by name, what their degree was in. And it, I think was a, my bias, I think it was a very beautiful piece that highlighted our students during a time period when they may not have been able to have a typical commencement, but I'm sure their commencement is going to be much more memorable than any of the ones that I attended when I was going to college. The base continues to do online education as well, and those are just some of the highlights. Trustee Yon, if there's any area that you think I went over too quick or just didn't touch on, I'd be happy for us to look at those as well.
Julia, do you also have the emergency resolution that, can you put that on the screen?
Yeah, one minute.
Thank you. Okay. So is there any discussion now on either the report or the emergency resolution? This is open to board members for discussion.
I, I, oh, I don't know if, okay, excuse me, trustee Yon, this is trustee Steffen. I just wanted to say that I know that everyone at the college has worked extremely hard throughout this time. Some of the faculty were telling me that although they were apprehensive at first about doing all online, that they were, found it very gratifying because they're able to spend more time with their students. And I think that's a positive that we sometimes overlook and sometimes goes forgotten. I was glad to see that the majority of our students stayed with it. I congratulate each and every one of them because they've made that commitment and they stuck to it even with this difficult crisis that we found ourselves in. I know things are more difficult this way for many students. And, and again, let me congratulate our students, but let me also congratulate our faculty and everyone at the college for all the hard work that they did to make it possible for as many students as possible to complete their semester. Everyone needs to be commended on that great effort. And I know things are very difficult working from home because I myself found myself doing online teaching from home without the necessary resources. So I'm glad that we were able to provide our faculty with the resources that they needed and our students with the resources that they needed to be able to do this work. That's all.
Carlos, I may have gotten ahead of myself here. Do we need a vote to consider this report as we have?
No, the, the motion on the table is just to adopt the resolution, so this is just conversation around that.
All right. The vote would be for what purpose?
Chairman, John?
Let me, let me get the, Carlos, the vote would be for what purpose?
To, so the way they have it worded here is that it would just be to accept the resolution. So it would be an affirmation that this is the route you want to continue.
Got it, okay. So we can continue with discussion, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Yes, in regards to this emergency resolution, first of all, there's twofold. I, is this a vote to continue the status or an update? Because I, I love what I'm seeing in the resolution, the, the resources that our faculty and staff is, what exactly, this status, we, we did the emergency resolution and we're, it's just an itemized list. What, what, I'm just concerned, so it's just an update? Is that correct? I just want to be very clear on what we're trying to do here. I'm not understanding.
That's what I'm trying to get clarification from Carlos. Carlos?
That's how I would interpret it, sir. It looks like it is an update on the actions taken. I don't recall the exact conversation around the adoption of the resolution, but I do recall there needing to be a status update, and I believe that's what it is. And so because you, it's not an information, it's a, in order for you to do it, you have to take action to do it, and that's what this is for. So it would be just a review as, as is made, any questions of clarification, and then you would move to adopt the report as.
As a report. As a report, okay. So continue discussion then, trustee?
Yes, I'm still not clear. So I, this is, sounds like, I mean, this is wonderful what we're doing, but I just want to know, the resolution that we made in March, is this just a continuance or exactly? I, I, I'm not clear on that. So I'm still not clear on the objective and the action, I mean, these are action, I mean, what is this? Because we're doing a resolution, and I just want to let the public know, when you do a resolution, we're stating something. Are we reiterating what we gave an emergency resolution of the first one we did in March? Or what, what exactly is going, I, I'm not clear. Please, I want more further discussion on this, and I would love our attorney to, I, I'm not clear on this emergency resolution at all.
Bob has joined us, so could I ask Bob to comment about the, about the emergency resolution?
Yes, certainly. As was noted, back in March, the emergency resolution was adopted for the reasons that have been discussed, and I can elaborate if necessary.
Yes.
The resolution itself did not have a termination date on it. So it's continuing as, as long as the emergency continues, and it'll continue until the board takes action to rescind or modify it. So this, the idea here was to give the board a chance to review the resolution and the actions that have been taken under the resolution to decide or consider whether there needed to be a change of course or not. So there is no action that really needs to be taken at this point. If you don't take any action, then it's kind of a status quo going forward. But if there was something that you wanted to modify, change, or whatever, then if you give us direction, then we'll come back at a subsequent meeting with a modified resolution or whatever you want. But it, it gives you a chance to, to kind of review, because in adopting the resolution, you authorized staff to take extraordinary actions that, you know, in a sense, kind of ignore some of the, the standard rules and regulations in order to deal with, more quickly and more flexibly with the emergency situation. And you've seen they've done an extraordinary job in doing that. And, and the question is, how much longer does that need to go on and if it needs to go on? Another thing that the emergency resolution does is it sets you up for reimbursement by the federal government under certain circumstances. If you're in an emergency situation, which you clearly are, the federal government, the state, the county of all declared emergencies, then, you know, funding becomes available that you can take advantage of. If you don't declare emergency, some of that funding isn't available. So that's another aspect of it.
I still have questions on the, I'm not, we do need to be taking emergency action, but I have concerns about the, the level of, I just would love, I have some major questions on this. I'm very, very concerned. So I'd like to table it. So I'm, I would like to motion to, I want to discuss this, maybe, I would like to table, so I'd like, Carlos, what, I would like to table this. I don't, I, I, I still need to look, I, I don't feel comfortable with this.
Carlos?
Would you like me to answer, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So the motion to table would mean that you're going to pause it for now and come back to it today? If what you're looking for is to deal with it at a different meeting, then the motion would be to postpone. It seems like to me, though, that this is an opportunity to ask the questions you need answered, and then if they cannot be answered, then a motion to table or postpone would make sense.
Okay. Mr. Chair, this is trustee Wilson.
Yes.
I, I wonder if I might make an alternate motion if trustee Sanchez Fulton would be willing to consider that. And that is a motion for the purposes of discussion and potential action to include an end date to the emergency resolution.
Okay. What do you propose? Do you propose an end date?
That is, that, that is the motion that I would, you know, propose that there be an end date to the emergency resolution. I do not propose the date. I am just proposing an end date to the emergency resolution.
Okay. Can, Carlos, can we have a motion that?
We'd like to amend it. So maybe amend the motion. I would like to, maybe, we need to discuss, yeah.
Okay, I'm getting lost in the procedure here, Carlos.
Yeah, so, so, you know, if, if it's okay with me, or with you, I'd like to ask a question because I'm not clear on what the intent is.
Where are you asking that of?
I'm asking the chair permission to ask for some clarification. Yeah, so, so it sounds like to me that there are two competing issues. The first is that a trustee would like more information on the item before making a vote, which makes sense, and, and so those questions should be asked now and discussed now so that then a vote can be taken. The second item that's being introduced is that there be a proposed end date but not a date. So that wouldn't be a motion in order. In order to amend this, you would actually have to insert a date in order to change the, the thing. So you could postpone this item to another meeting so that it return with an end date. That would be an appropriate motion, but you cannot adopt a motion to include an end date and then approve the item. So there, it, it, it needs to be more clear.
So I would, I would like to tape, if, if, I'm asking my board members if we could table this to our next meeting, just because there's some other concerns on an end date, which is very useful. And then I, there's one more question I have on the actual resolution. I, I believe that we just, I would like legal counsel, I have some questions, much more questions, that other community colleges throughout California are doing, and I would love to postpone that. So I motion to postpone that to our next board meeting.
We have two motions, Carlos. Do we need to consider these separately?
No, so the first motion was not seconded. The second proposition did not receive a second. I did not hear you restate either one of those. It sounds like you do now have a motion to postpone the item, but you don't have a motion, there were some things that happened at the beginning of that, but it didn't direct that motion in any direction. So what needs to be said is that you could postpone this, you, you moved to postpone this item to include an end date and to get better clarification for the next meeting. That would suffice.
All right.
Mr. Chair, this is trustee Wilson. I would like our attorney to weigh in on this. There was, I don't believe there was an ample opportunity to provide a second. We moved immediately from one emotion to the next motion, and there really wasn't time to, I asked trustee Sanchez Fulton if she would consider an alternate motion. So there, there wasn't really an opportunity to make a second. So, you know, I, I would like to see that there be a motion on the floor and a second, which will allow for discussion, which will allow for trustee Sanchez Fulton to ask those questions that she needs to ask, that, and to allow for more discussion before any action could be taken. So that's where I'm coming from. So if our attorney would like to weigh in on that, that's fine with me.
Okay.
What, you know, I would, I would tend to defer to Carlos in terms of the procedure, but, but there, there's, I guess, a motion on the table. I don't know that it's been seconded, but that would, that opens up discussion on, I mean, a wide range, I mean, you can discuss whatever you want to discuss before you actually vote on that motion. So I don't know that discussion in any sense has been cut off at this point. I think it's important that the, the board have an opportunity to articulate whatever concerns they have with respect to the emergency order and the process going forward. And then once those concerns are on the table, then the board can decide, you know, what kind of a direction it wants to take.
Could I suggest that we put those concerns on the table before we consider these motions? Carlos?
So right now, sir, if you would just take a, ask if there's a second to the motion on the table, you can proceed with what trustee Wilson is asking for.
Okay, and the motion is, as you state?
To postpone this item to the next meeting to include an end date.
End date. Is there a second to that? There is no second to that motion. Okay? So now we'll go backwards. Is there, can continue the discussion of items that people would like to raise?
So in order for you to continue discussion, there needs to be a motion on the table. I would just remind folks that if the motion on the table, once you've started the discussion, is not what you want, you can amend it to do something else.
So what is people's pleasure? Do we have another motion?
What happened to the main motion? If we didn't have a, another motion made, doesn't the main motion take precedence?
Because we originally moved and seconded this to have discussion.
Yeah, which, correct. That is to accept this report?
I have concern that we don't have an end date on this, and we need to tape, and that is why I made the motion to postpone that, my fellow trustees. That's, I, I just want to make sure that we're aware of, once we make this resolution.
Right now, we're not making a resolution, though. We're approving a report that was presented.
I.
It says, review status of emergency resolution, including the action that's taken pursuant to that resolution.
I was, Robert, our attorney, I, I was just concerned, because when you do a resolution, it's a policy.
We already have a resolution in place. We're reviewing it.
Right, we're reviewing it, but I believe that we need to, we need to edit and modify with discussion.
How can you edit and modify a report?
No, because we had, this is a review of the emergency resolution. So this is, Carlos, this is then a review, I just, I'm, I'm just, I have questions on this actual emergency resolution, because it got edited.
Just clarify what the most, what the meaning of this action is.
Okay.
Somebody that could clarify that for us.
Could I, Carlos, make a suggestion here? And that is, can we separate this to be a, an acceptance of the report and vote on the acceptance of the report? And then in a separate action, review of the status of the resolution? Can we do these separate actions?
Yes, you can ask your board if there's any objection to dividing the question as you've defined. And then if there is not, then you would proceed into one action for the first and one action for the second.
Thank you. Is there any objection to dividing this into two votes?
No objection, Mr. Chair. This is Trustee Wilson.
Thank you. All right. Hearing no further objection, I would like to call a, a vote on accepting report of actions taken during this time period.
So move.
All right.
Second.
Second. President Kennaman, can you conduct a roll call vote on accepting the report of actions taken?
Certainly. Student trustee Chavez Chides?
Yes.
Trustee Stefan?
Aye.
Trustee Perez?
Aye.
Trustee Wilson?
Aye.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Aye.
Trustee Yon?
Yes, so the motion to accept the report has passed unanimously. We are looking at the resolution itself. So Carlos, can I call for discussion on the resolution itself?
So now you need a, a motion in order to?
Okay.
So the motion that's presented is to adopt it, right? So that's what you would take.
Okay. So would this be a motion to continue that?
What, what I would suggest, this is Bob Hargreaves. The resolution has already been adopted, so the, the discussion would be regarding, you know, any change. It may, the board may feel needs to be made in the resolution or, or something along that effect. If the board does nothing at this point, the resolution remains intact. Even if the board wanted to amend the resolution at this point, we would need direction to that effect and to come back at the next meeting with amended resolution. There is no really amended resolution on the table at this point. So at this point, what we really need is direction from the board on how they want to move forward with the resolution.
So is this, is this an opportunity to discuss questions about this resolution?
Mr. Chair? Do we need a motion on the floor, Mr. Chair, in order to have the discussion, or no?
Carlos is saying, yes, we do. So Carlos, what would that motion be?
So I, I don't want to make the motion for you, sir, but what I'm understanding the attorney to say is that if you don't do anything, it stays the same. And so it sounds like some trustees would like to make a, a change. So what I understood the, the attorney to say is that because there's not a presented amendment on the table, then an adequate motion would be to postpone this item to the next meeting with direction on what you would like to see as a change. So it would be a motion to postpone this item to include an end date and?
Yes.
For the next meeting.
I, I would like to motion that we postpone this item and amend the resolution for an end date and other items that are of concern for the trustees. Thank you.
Do we need to specify those other items, Carlos?
I think they would come out in the discussion. So that would be a good, good place to start if there's a second.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second. Trustee Wilson?
Okay, we have now a motion to postpone the discussion item to the next meeting to include an end date. We're now open to discussion.
Yes. I wanted to see, the reason why I brought this forth, I, I want to thank a trustee Wilson for bringing that end date, and also wanted to bring forth some best practices of other California community colleges, in the sense of the trustees gave an, I, I just want to look at the executive order that the president received. Mr. Hargreaves, I would like to, was that also addressed on the complete autonomy that the president has without informing the board? That's what I'm concerned about, of other items that go on. Thank you. But the? Yeah, because we did a resolution on that, giving executive order to the president. That's the concern I'm having.
Well, that was the emergency order you gave the president authority to, to take the actions necessary to, you know, protect the health and the ongoing operations. And the president gave a report, just gave a report to the community, to the board about the actions taking over that. And I think the idea there was for the board to examine what had been done, see if this is time for a course correction. I mean, the, the president, notwithstanding the, the resolution continues to operate under the ultimate direction of the board, and with the, you know, responsibility to report back to the board, which I think has been ongoing regarding actions taken. And if at any time the board sees something that they're not happy with or concerned about, I mean, that's the opportunity to ask the president, you know, what's going on and, and provide alternative direction if necessary. So I would see, you know, the action today as being part of that conversation for the board to decide, you know, whether they're satisfied with the way things are unfolding under the emergency order, and then if not, you know, come back with some alternative direction.
Let me, let me be clear what my request is, and my concern for the public and the community is, I know the college, the College of the Desert is having monthly COVID meetings in our district, and I want to thank all the executive team for having that. I just, I am concerned, as a representative of the community, on just getting updates to the Board of Trustees as, as elected officials that we are, just having more communication on?
Times on what's going to happen throughout the state. And I think that updates, weekly updates would inform the board of what's going on, but I don't think that any action that's been taken so far is not some action that the president could not have done without the resolution. So maybe, you know, we really don't need the resolution unless there is some reason it to receive funding. I'm not sure. I'd like to have that question answered. There is any funding that we would lose if we rescinded that prior to the pandemic being completely over and having it all clear and it back to normal.
Bob, can you answer that?
Yeah, I'm not personally involved in the district's efforts to access funding. I'm not sure exactly what pots of money there are out there for the district. I know I work with other public agencies like the cities, and they, there are FEMA funds. And, and the recommendation from our attorneys that are focused on, on emergency declarations and reimbursement has been to all our public agencies to leave the emergency declarations in place, at least for the time being, to make sure they don't cut off, you know, their ability to access that funding. Now, they're, again, particularly given the circumstances on the ground out there. So I would suggest that, yeah, and in response to the idea about there being an end date, I mean, if you wanted to choose one, you'd say, you know, at such time as the federal and the state emergencies are declared over, or you could put something in there to the effect that, you know, the resolution will come back every three months to be reaffirmed and extended as necessary, something like that. But to, you know, provide an absolute dead, drop dead date would be somewhat anomalous. I think probably it might, a more productive focus might be on, I mean, if there's actions being taken, and I'm not aware of any that the board is uncomfortable with under the emergency declaration, that there could be an effort to kind of narrow the powers granted under the emergency declaration to respond to those concerns.
Carlos, would it be appropriate, then, to consider the motion to postpone the discussion of the emergency resolution until the next meeting with assuming then at that time there would be an opportunity to have the discussion of an, of a end date and any necessary modifications?
Uh, yes, that would, that would work. The only thing that would need to be added is how the board will do that. And so if it would be through recommendations by the chair or sent to the office of the president or whatever, so there just needs, that one piece is missing.
As to how these recommendations would be made, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Do we have board discussion as to how the recommendations for an end date, any necessary modifications would be made?
Yes, I have a recommendation that maybe the chair, the executive team, the chair and the vice chair can review and take input from my fellow trustees about issues of end dates, issues, other issues that may arise, and best practices of other community colleges. So that is the amendment, Carlos? Is that, I just wanted, the how is right there. Chairman?
I'm waiting for Carlos.
Mr. Chair, so now you would take what she said and interpret that how you heard it. I don't want to interpret it for you.
Okay. So I would carry it as postpone consideration of the emergency resolution until the next meeting with it coming back to include a discussion of a possible end date and other necessary modifications made by a, of the chair and vice chair.
That works.
Is there discuss, further discussion of that motion?
Does that require a second, Mr. Chair? This is Trustee Wilson.
Carlos? Yes.
I, I second that.
Second. Is there further discussion, or should we move to a vote? Hearing no discussion, President Kennaman, will you conduct a vote?
Certainly. Student trustee Chavez Chides?
Yes.
Trustee Stefan?
Aye.
Trustee Perez?
Aye.
Trustee Wilson?
Aye.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Aye.
Trustee Yon?
Yes, motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Carlos, for your help, and Bob, for your help.
Thank you.
This is all new territory for everyone. Human Resources, tentative agreement between the Desert Community College District and the College of the Desert Faculty Association. Do I have a motion to approve tentative agreement between the Desert Community College District and the College of the Desert Faculty Association as presented?
So move. Trustee Stefan?
Second. Trustee Wilson?
Thank you. Any discussion on this item?
I'd like to speak to it, this trustee Stefan. I know this took a lot of work. I know how difficult Zoom meetings can be, and to complete this much work in such a short time, I know it seems probably long to many people, because it took almost four months to get to this point, but those four months involve many, many Zoom meetings, and Zoom meetings are not the easiest thing to do. And when you're dealing with something that can be as emotional and as safety and welfare of the individuals of the college, and what needs to be done to ensure that our students are getting the education that is, that we should be providing them, whether it's a crises or not, this, this is, I'm, I'm holding up all the documents, if you want to see how thick that is. That's how much work it was. And that, that just is a heroic effort on everyone's part, and I want to thank everyone for that, and to our, everybody that was involved in that process. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
This is trustee Wilson. I, I agree with trustee Stefan, but also wanted to, to thank the staff and everyone for making the corrections on that particular item.
Other discussion? President Kennaman, will you conduct a roll call vote?
Yes, sir. Student trustee Chavez Chides?
Yes.
Trustee Stefan?
Aye.
Trustee Perez?
Aye.
Trustee Wilson?
Aye.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Aye.
Trustee Yon?
Aye. Motion carried unanimously. Moving to tentative agreements between the Desert Community College District and the California School Employees Association and its chapter 407. Do I have a motion to approve the tentative agreements between the Desert Community College District and the California School Employees Association and its chapter 407 as presented?
So move. Trustee Stefan?
Second. Trustee Perez?
Any discussion?
Again, a Herculean effort here. I mean, you look at the thickness of this, all these documents, and again, it's the safety, it's the welfare of employees and the staff and classified employees. They really need to be commended, because again, this is all done through Zoom, and, and that's, that's probably the most difficult way to negotiate that I can imagine. Thank you.
Other discussion?
I commend also the staff that put together this contract via Zoom. It's very difficult to conduct business sometimes, because you would like to see facial expressions, but the hard work that our executive team put together, and also those in the great chapter of the California School Employees Association, chapter 407, looking for the safety net for our faculty and staff, and those that work each and every day for our district. So I want to thank the two teams in collaboration, because that takes a lot of work to do. So thank you so much for your hard work and the diligence that we get to see the, the hard work that you get done. Thank you again.
Any other discussion? President Kennaman, will you conduct a roll call vote?
Certainly. Student trustee Chavez Chides?
Yes.
Trustee Stefan?
Aye.
Trustee Perez?
Aye.
Trustee Wilson?
Aye.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Aye.
Trustee Yon?
Yes, motion carried unanimously. Moving to 13.01, resolution number 071620-3, budget revisions, adjustments, and transfers. Do I have a motion to approve resolution number 071620-3 as presented?
So move.
And that was?
Trustee Sanchez?
Second? Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second, trustee Wilson.
Any discussion?
Yes, I would like to hear from John Ramon, a discussion on this budget revision and what this resolution means so the public can hear this. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. This resolution is an annual resolution that we bring in. It allows us to go ahead and bring in new monies when we receive them, things like categoricals or new budget adjustments as needed. You know, primarily for new monies coming in or adjustments to apportionments that we receive notice on and get them implemented right away. And then, then we bring them back monthly, as you know, for action as a ratification each, so that happens each month.
Any other discussion? President Kinnaman, will you conduct a roll call vote?
Yes, sir. Student trustee Chavez Chides.
Yes.
Trustee Stefan.
Aye.
Trustee Perez.
Aye.
Trustee Wilson.
Aye.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton.
Aye.
Trustee Yon.
Yes, motion carried unanimously. 13.02, the 2022 to 2026 five-year construction plan. Do I have a motion to approve the 2022 to 2026 five-year construction plan as presented?
So move, Mr. Chair. This is trustee Wilson.
I'll second trustee Stefan.
Thank you. Is there discussion?
I have a question. Looking over the documents that were attached to this five-year plan, I'd like to have an overview of it because one of the documents was in reference to the science building. And in some of the documentation, it said it was built in 1952 and there have been no major repairs. I remember when I first joined the board, I was first elected in 1999. And in 2000, the spring of 2000, they had a ribbon cutting. It was very shortly after my election, after they had done some remodeling or something to that building. And I was wondering if anybody had any records on what was actually done at that time to that building. And I know we probably don't have John White here. But it was a question because it implied that there was nothing done to that building all that time. And I know there was.
Yeah, I am not aware of any significant, and maybe if there was some work done, it did require DSA approval.
I think it did. The reason I think it did was because they had a plaque they put on the wall of that building. So I was wondering if there was some way we could get an update on that. Not that I want to withhold, hold up the plans. If somebody could go over those plans, I'd feel more comfortable.
Certainly, we, we can follow up with that. The, the plan is, of course, a plan that's mandatory from the chancellor's office. And they have us submit it on August 1 of each year. So we could, if we find something, look that up, that would be a correction that I think would be a, a minor correction in the plan. And so if, if that's agreeable.
Yeah, but could, because could we go through what the five-year plan actually entails? You know, like have a brief overview of that, please?
Sure. So the five-year plan, it's again, something that is done annually and submitted to the chancellor's office. And it represents the value of our $540 million bond that had been passed, both our Measure B and Measure CC bonds. The first year of the plan and the document and, and is, and is the first year for state funding as it applies to our science and building renovation. So there were two projects, if you noticed in there, that if we incorporate them in the plan, we have an opportunity to a 50-50 match. The projects that are already in design and construction as the highest priorities are the Indio expansion, the Indio Child Development Education Center, Palm Springs Development Project, Roadrunner Motors in Cathedral City. And then there are three future renovation projects for the Palm Desert campus that are identified as five, six, and seven. The final project listed, number eight, is completed, is the completed water and sewer replacement project awaiting completion of the DSA administration on the project. I'm looking here to see if there's anything else in here to highlight. The liberal arts renovation is also listed in there as project three. It's an estimated $7.1 million project. So that is the one that we would be looking for, the state to provide 3.4 million or half of the funding on that if those funds become allocate, allocated. Now, if the, and if the chancellor's office endorses those projects, then that would help support both the science building and liberal arts, the renovation could begin in July 2022.
And I, just to clarify for the board, I wasn't saying that we shouldn't renovate the science building. A science building that hasn't been renovated in over 20 years even requires a lot of work. So, but I just wanted to make sure that we weren't misrepresenting something there. If we could get clarification on that, Joel.
Certainly.
That's all. I'm sorry if I sounded like I was saying that it needed to be done. It does.
President Kinnaman, what, what are the opportunities and challenges of COVID and state economy as it applies to this document?
The state economy would only impact the two items, whether or not chancellor's office would fund 50% of those two items. The rest of the plan, we have funding earmarked for. And as we're working in a post-COVID environment, the criteria that we are putting out to the architects is for them to design facilities with that in mind. And I'll, I'll give an example for one project. We have three different firms competing for, and they've been directed to have that in mind and help us. We're educators, help us know what the future thinking is around using robotics, around using artificial intelligence, around using elevators, ventilation systems, et cetera. And we've stressed on that is going to be a significant part of what we look at whenever they submit their proposals.
Chairman, John, I have a question. Addressing to Joel, President Kinnaman. Thank you very much for, I've been requesting the artificial intelligence for several years now. I just am very pleased to hear that we are now taking forth in the 21st century of AI in our public institution. Also wanted to look at something innovative. And I'm, I'm wondering, I don't see that on page 28. I don't see anything post-COVID in regards to like kiosks. Is, I know it's so minute and very trivial, but I think that we should plan a post-COVID in higher ed and be that leader in the future of higher academia as other community colleges are. So twofold, artificial intelligence and having a kiosk where our faculty and staff can also have that available. Thank you. And students.
Yes, I think all these projects in the plan, and of course, we'll update it again next year. We will need to emphasize the postcode environment, you know, the use of robotics and other types of different facilities. The positive thing in that, as we look at post-COVID and discuss things like robotics, artificial intelligence, ventilation systems, et cetera, it's going to provide us an opportunity to also have in our environments a learning lab where we could trade in those fields as well, individuals that understand post-COVID types of facilities, which I think that would be over the next decade or longer, some, some fields that individuals would be in high demand for.
Do we need to state that in the plan since it's being approved by the chancellor? I don't see anything on, on page 28. I just see salaries for administrators, counselors, but I don't see anything on, is it so minute that you don't mention it?
I, I think that it's really where we're going to mention it is when we get to the specific bid documents of each facility. And, and that's where the emphasis is, emphasis is. Because if you, if you get in there, there's typically not a lot of detail on what the buildings are. And there are different phases we go through during the design phase. And so that's where the emphasis of postcode environment would be.
Because I don't see that in the writing. Do we need to legally put that in writing of the post-COVID? Because in order to get those funding modules in there for our construction, because now, because of the new normal, we need to be adding that. Do we need to legally add that in our construction five-year plan?
That is not a criteria that they've requested for us to, to have in there as, as a requirement. You know, as we go to next year's plan and as we learn more and as the chancellor's office has learned more, that may be something that, that, you know, where they would like to see it. And also recognize that in this plan, it's really those two facilities that they would have any, any input on, any facility that they would be providing funding towards. And so there's only two facilities in the plan that is subject, subject to that. But at this time, they have not stipulated having, you know, anything related that's that specific.
Should we add something so we could get additional funding? I believe throughout the state, a lot of colleges are, based on the conversations I've had at the state level, should we have that just in case there, we can acquire special funding for that through federal or state funds? That's my concern.
Hey, I think for the purpose of this plan, that it would not necessarily be necessary. But if there were other funding that's out there that requires us to submit, that it would be very thoughtful for us to help them understand that we're looking at. What we've been stressing with our architects is we want them to think like futurists. And so in doing so, we believe that's going to give us opportunities to develop other types of curriculum as well.
The, the, maybe the question I'm asking is because of the new guidelines that we're going to have post-COVID on social distancing in our classroom, and this is a construction plan, I just want to make sure that we are going to be putting that into place because we're going to be needing these PPEs, higher, higher educational systems. We'll be needing additional funding for our construction plans because we have to build classrooms that are very different than they were last year. That's my concern. And can we get that funding available since we will be doing extra building? Let's say Plexiglas or et cetera. These are just very minute, but very important in the new COVID environment in higher ed.
And those are, those are items that we are looking at in our bid documents. Because, you know, I mentioned the Indio expansion project. We've hired a firm to go back and look at the plans that were approved that were on their way to DSA and look at them through a post-COVID lens. You know, there's some that say that you really don't want to be in an elevator with a bunch of people. So if the first thing you see when you walk into a building is an elevator, you are drawn to that. Now, we do need elevators still for other reasons. So, you know, that was one question that we were looking at on the Indio plans. How do we make that more discreet so, so individuals are more likely to use the staircases since they're open stairs? And so we hired a firm that is reviewing those plans through a post-COVID lens before we send it to the DSA.
The concern I'm having is because of our hundred, our, our weather in the Indio campus in particular, we have a lot of open space. So utilizing that open space would be most important because of the new COVID. I just want to make sure that we are in the lens of that and we are in the cutting edge of that throughout the community colleges and being a leader on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
When does this come up for review again?
Next year.
I, I have to say that I understand the necessity of meeting headlines of report, but I, I'm just so uncomfortable with making these statements when there are so many unknowns which can make major impact.
There is some. I believe. But none of these facilities will be at a stage, as I look at them, none of these facilities will be at a stage of construction before we submit the plan again.
So does that mean, this is trustee Wilson. So does that mean, President Kinnaman, it'll be coming back to the board before then?
Not this plan. Like this plan is required annually, so it will be coming back. Yes. So it, so it could look very different. You know, as we move through this pandemic time period.
And so any adjustments will be made to that plan that'll be presented to the board for approval, correct?
That is correct. It always has, it's a requirement that the board adopt the plan before it can be submitted to the chancellor's office.
I have a question. When is the deadline for this plan? Chair Yon, this is trustee Wilson. Would you kindly comment? What did you go again?
Well, first of all, I actually necessitate of my making report. And obviously, something needs to be done by August 1st. I appreciate that what we might be looking at one year from today might be different. Perhaps maybe when, when as our, as we try and prepare next year's document, we give major attention to what the world is going to be. Are there any other discussion?
I agree with your suggestion, Chairman Yant. We have to, this is for a five-year construction plan. I just want to make sure that we have access to additional funding or less funding for this additional because we are going to be needing, because of the state budget, we're going, our resources are going to be very, very low. So we need to be very careful now what we set forth through the five-year cycle because we will not be having funding. So we need to be very, like what you said, mindful of our, the new COVID and and
Trustee Chavez Chides?
Yes.
Trustee Stefan?
Aye.
Trustee Perez?
Aye.
Trustee Wilson?
Aye.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Aye.
Trustee Yant?
Yes, motion carried unanimously. Moving to 13.03, notice of intent to award contract for asphalt paving services for the Fred Waring Entrance Project. Do I have a motion to approve the notice of intent to award contract for asphalt and paving services for the Fred Waring Entrance Project as presented?
So move trustee Stefan.
Second, is our second?
Trustee Wilson, second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Aye. Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead. I think we do have discussion, so please go ahead.
This is trustee Sanchez. Just want to make sure, you know, I always bring out, are these local business owners? I just want to know a little bit, a lot of times we're awarding these big contracts to outside. I'm about making sure that we have a competitive bid and that we're helping local construction. So just wanted to know a little bit about all five and where are they from, or any from Coachella Valley? And just, thank you.
John, do you have that information available?
No, I do not. I'll have to to that and see where they're headquartered at.
Just making sure that we get local contractors always. I'm always asking that question every time we have bids.
We also have to go with the lowest bid, though.
Correct. I know that trustee Stefan.
I'd like to ask a question about that. In the years that I was consultant for Caltrans, there was a lot of discussion about that agencies do not necessarily have to go with the lowest bid if there is judgment that that bid may not be sufficiently performed.
That's correct. Well, that's correct, yes.
So I'm asking, since this lowest bid is considerably lower, are the folks working with this confident that that can be performed at an adequate level?
If I can respond on that. You know, the bond office is managing this program. And I know that AMS is a company that we've used in the past. And anytime it's recommended for award, it's based on the lowest responsive bidder. So that's the bidder that meets all the criteria and we believe can, you know, we have good reason to believe that they can fulfill the terms of the contract. And we are obligated to go with the lowest responsive bidder.
Correct. If we believe that they are able to perform the job as, without problems.
Right.
What I've learned is that people can bid low and then end up not being able to perform because they underbid.
Yeah, typically before this stage, because they're vetted through and you see some of the things to make sure that the bid's complete and that it was responsive. And if they weren't responsive, as you see in there, there's one that was deemed non-responsive because they were missing essential requirements. But that's part of the vetting process is to ensure, and that can even include references and the like.
I have a question. Oh, that we had discussed putting down road with recycled materials. Do you ever do that? And we have. How did that turn out? And will this road, this way be regular paint?
This is probably the
to know where these companies are coming from.
This meeting is being recorded.
And this is not the first time. So I'd like to repeat what trustee Sanchez Fulton has said. Where are these companies located? Are they using local people?
Yeah, we'll get that information.
And we'll also have visit with Moss about if there's a way to depict that on the backup materials. I mean, even in the summary, we can say we sent it out to 100 potential contractors and we received 30 back. And this many of them were from Coachella Valley. I mean, we could provide that type of information in the description that is the face of this before we get to the actual companies so that it's explained each time.
And making sure we have diversity, inclusion in our vending contracts. And we're not just talking about diversity, inclusion, but we're actually implementing and giving that for our vendors as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a pressing need for this to be awarded? John?
We're trying to get it done ideally before everything opens back up because the library is doing pickup and they're trying to, and it disrupts their business. So we're trying to get it done while they're still, you know, back into a closed state because they had opened up some, they're doing curbside pickup and it's kind of disruptive to those operations. So we've been trying to get that, you know, we were hoping to get it done in the initial phase. But again, we found that we had to do more extensive bidding and more expensive, extensive work.
Is the board of mind to approve this or wait for additional information?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, this is trustee Wilson. What is the urgency of approving this contract today? John, can you, I'm sorry, go ahead, President Kineman.
That's okay. The city library is reopening and so this is the entryway for the public to have access to the city library.
I see. Okay, so it's the Fred Waring Entrance. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe it's an urgency, President Kineman, but it would be nice to have, if just local, just, I know the urgency and that is very important for us for library access, but it would be nice for us to bring that out just to local companies here in the Coachella Valley. Just, if there's not an urgency on this matter, and I know it is, but it would be nice to have that option.
Other board members? Is it your mind to vote and approve or ask?
So this is trustee Wilson again. So President Kineman, the San Pablo entrance could be used, correct? As an alternative?
I believe that we have it offline. John, can you speak to that?
Yeah, because the city is also getting ready to do work on that segment of San Pablo and that might not be accessible for us.
Oh, is it time for that already? Okay.
Yeah.
And other discussion?
In the future, it would be nice that we have a policy that we subcontract or contract local contractors in the future, just to give a percentage of local contractors an opportunity to bid. A lot of, what I've heard in the chambers of commerce, that we need to publicly give, I know we do that and we do a great job, but it would be nice just to have that opportunity to, to give opportunity to our local contractors, engineers. We have a lot of great alumni from the College of the Desert that are working for these firms. Maybe in the future, we could look into this, but it would be nice to have that.
Yes, I could see us bringing forward a staff report or a presentation on criteria, on the process that's used and where we tend to get bids from. I know that I've visited with Mac about this in the past and he's given me percentages overall and dollar amounts that have been spent locally. I don't have that information, you know, in my head, but he's shared that with me. And when he shared it, it was a significant amount of resources that do go to local firms. But I think it would be worth providing a comprehensive report of that to the board.
Thank you very much for asking those questions to Moss. Maybe get an update on that and I would like to know if they're women-owned. And also, are we giving it out to the eastern part of the Coachella Valley? Are we giving it out to other firms that are not, you know, alumni, giving preference, doing a percentage of anyone that has graduated? That means a lot to small business owners to have that opportunity. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? John, could I request that you do provide the board the location of these firms even though we are voting today?
Yes, absolutely.
Could I also request who we sent this out to? I heard that mentioned that it's sent out to over 100 different construction companies and that we only get about 30 responses back and that then it's based on which ones complete the process after that. But if we had all of that information, I think it would help us understand better, you know, whether or not we're making an effort to try to reach our local companies and the diversity of the individuals in the private construction business.
We can do that. And that was an arbitrary number I threw out there. To say in the recommended action, we could provide a lot more description than what we are providing that would answer those questions. And it would also answer those questions to our community.
Yes.
And may I suggest that San Bernardino Valley College did a best practice of doing an open bid town hall, how to do business with the Desert Community College District. It would be nice for us to have that type of town hall where potential vendors, how to do business with the Desert Community College. I thought it was very successfully run event where the local town hall and how to bid and for our local public institutions. Thank you.
I'm going to ask President Kineman to conduct a roll call vote, please.
Okay, student trustee Chavez Chides?
Yes.
Trustee Stefan?
Aye.
Trustee Perez?
Aye.
Trustee Wilson?
Mr. Chair, is the item we're voting on, is it the recommended action that's on the report?
Yes.
Okay, and then there will be follow-up to the questions that have been asked by you and trustee Stefan and trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Aye.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Aye.
Trustee Yant?
Yes, motion carried unanimously. And John, you have a list of the items that were requested?
I do.
Thank you. Item 13.04, and this is long, so please bear with me. Resolution number 071620-4 of the Board of Trustees of the Desert Community College District authorizing the issuance and sale of not to exceed $60 million aggregate principal amount of bonds of Desert Community College District by negotiated sale pursuant to a bond purchase agreement prescribing the terms of sale, approving the form of and authorizing the execution and delivery of bond purchase agreement and a continuing disclosure certificate, approving the form of and authorizing the distribution of an official statement for the bonds and authorizing the execution of necessary documents and certificates and related actions. Before I ask for a motion to approve, I want to tell the board that we will have a presentation by Adam Bauer Feldman and Rollup and Associates before we take a vote. Do I have a motion to approve resolution number 071620-4 as presented?
So move trustee Stefan.
Second, trustee Wilson?
Thank you. So now we will move to the presentation.
May I ask one informational question first?
Certainly.
Will this presentation apply to the next action item as well or will we hear a separate presentation on that one?
My understanding it's both.
Okay, thank you.
So Julia Hu is here for the presentation?
Great, thank you. And hopefully everyone can hear me. My name is Adam Bauer and we also have Jason Chung on the line. We both serve as the district's financial advisor and have done so for some time. We've prepared this presentation very similar to what we've done in the past. It's really an update on some things, in particular, the two transactions that we're looking at here. But on that screen, hopefully what you see is to the left, it says general obligation bonds, election 2016, series 2020. This, this series is to fund new projects and also some of the costs associated with the financing. Then to the right of that, you hopefully see 2020 general obligation bond refunding, federally taxable. This is a refinancing, so taxpayer savings from the existing series of bonds. And by combining these into one transaction, you're able to get some efficiencies by doing both that at once. And so, Julia, if it's okay to go to the next slide, please. On the page two, this is an important slide because this is about the interest rate environment that we operate within. And the charts at the bottom left, you've seen probably 10 times for me. And that is a long-term timeframe of the 30-year and the 10-year municipal market data curve. And as I've told you in the past, that is a, those are indices that work a lot like our Dow Jones Industrial Average. If you look in the newspaper, well, in our business, what we look at is the MMD, Municipal Market Data Curve, and we have the 30 and 10-year. One thing that looks very different about this than what I've showed in the past is those spikes in there. And what those spikes represent is when the, I think the world or the country recognized that COVID-19 was in the United States. and governments, schools, and many other things were going to be shut down. Investors sold municipal bonds, saying, we don't want that anymore. We want treasuries and cash. And so the interest rates spiked. And then it looked like we might be opening sometime. We heard Easter, we heard sometime around then we might be reopening. So rates dropped again, and then there was a realization that that's not happening. Rates rose again. And then ever since then, rates have really started drifting back down again. So investors are saying, we may have overreacted by getting rid of municipal bonds. Maybe we should have stayed in those. And now they've stayed very very low since. Left is the exemptals, and then sort of right is treasuries. Treasuries have just been very, very low. So when money was flowing out of municipal bonds, one of the things that flowed into was treasuries. And so even though now municipal bonds are doing very well again, you also see a lot of money held up in treasuries as well. In our case, both these are positive signs. The fact that rates are low in both these areas is very positive because we're looking at doing a tax exempt and a taxable transaction. So Julie, if it's okay to go to slide three, please. So slide three gives a little more context to what's happening here. I have never shown you the slides to far left with the light blue bars and that red line. With the light, so I showed you the 10 year and 30 year MMD on the prior slide. What I'm showing you now is the one through 30. So there's an MMD for every year up to 30. And those blue bars represent the range that interest rates have been for each one of those maturities. The red line represents where the MMD is as of yesterday. And hopefully what you notice is that red line is at the bottom of all those light blue bars. And what that signals to all of us is we are at the low point. We are for going back to 2005, interest rates are in the lower end of the range in an era that's considered pretty low in interest rates already. But that red line represents where we stand, and you can see where the lower end of that. So now to the far right, it's another chart that I, but I have shown you this one. I've shown you this one many times. It just doesn't look the way it normally does. Normally, I'm showing you this chart with a whole bunch of green. And what that represents is that line, that money's flowing into the municipal bond funds. But what you probably notice there is a huge spike in March. And that was when money was flowing out of municipal bond funds into treasuries and into cash. But now what's happened since then is investors have calmed down, and we've had seven weeks of inflows back into municipal bond funds. We're only capturing a few of them on this chart, but the data is delayed. But we're able to show money's flowing back into municipal bond funds. And the reason why this is so important is this is our demand for our bonds. So if money is leaving the municipal bond market, we have less demand. And so fortunately for us, we certainly had March where the market was all but shut down in this for this sort of thing. But investors have really calmed down, and now once again, very interested in getting a high credit like College of the Desert and having it be double tax exempt if you're within the state of California. You get, investors don't pay federal taxes on this, and they don't pay state taxes, income tax on this as well. So you can see why it's so attractive. So Julie, if it's okay, we'll go to the next slide, please. So now I've talked a bit about the macro environment, and now we're getting back to College of the Desert. And this is your assessed value. The assessed value, what we're looking at is all the taxable properties in your boundaries, both residential and commercial. And your assessed value has performed very well. If you look at the 10 year average, we're at 2.21 because we capture some of the great recession in there. But if you look at that 20 year average, we're at 6.59. And so, you know, it's grown very well. One thing I want to point your attention to though is I don't want to ever have you sell bonds at the 6.59 level. We want to use lower projections than that so that if we ever do, when we have another recession and when we have, if we have a recession like we did with the great recession, we are, we have cushion in this so that we're not over the tax rate we promised your voters. And so pay attention to both those, and know we want to be in the middle of those. We don't want to be at the 6.59. And you and the district staff have done a very good job of not being real aggressive on your bond program, being conservative enough to be able to maintain prudent projections. So next slide, please. On this slide, what we're detailing here is the district's existing debt. So this is what's already been issued. The one in the bottom there, the 2016 series, election 2018 series, called on 8/1/2023, these bonds are the ones that we get to refinance. Now, there's something very interesting happening right now, and it is the, when we do a refinancing, that's more than 90 days from that call date, it's taxable. But there's actually a bill out there that's expected to be heard in August, and that bill may allow us to do this on a tax exempt basis. And so right now, we're looking at net present value savings north of 10%. We could be even higher than that if that bill goes in place. So district staff and our office are watching this closely so that should that bill go through, we may be able to get even more taxpayer savings than we're already showing here. So certainly a positive development that's happening right in the middle of what we're doing. Julie, next slide, please. So you have several measures outstanding, and one of them is your 2014 election, measure B. And what this chart shows to the bottom left, and you've seen this chart many times from us, bottom left, to the far left, is the tax rate per 1,000. Red line represents a $25 per 1,000 that you communicated to voters that you would try to maintain. And then each one of those colors in the bar chart represents how much that series of bonds consumes of the tax rate. And so you can see there that with the projections that we have, we are trending a little bit lower over time, which is exactly what you want. Now, this is for all the bonds that have been issued. Our job as at the college and our job as your municipal advisor are just to monitor this and look for those refinancing savings over time. And so if we can go to the next slide, please. So slide, this slide, what we have here is your 2016 election, measure CC, and similar concept tax rate to the far left. Here, we tried to be a little bit lower on the tax rate than 1950. So that's where that red line is. And then each color represents a series that's been issued. And then hopefully, we also noticed there are the hash marks. The hash marks are projections. We have not issued those bonds. And so you can see there where we have plenty of capacity in this measure, and we'll show you how we layer in some new series of bonds here. But that's where that $60 million comes in as part of that hash mark.
I have a question on that one?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I see that the tax rate increased tax rates from 2020 to 2037. So the just, what are you basing it on? Because we're getting, I'm just concerned about that rate increase.
So I feel like maybe I didn't explain well on the chart is the, we're trying to keep a consistent tax rate. And that red line represents $19.50 per $100,000. And our goal is to target that number. And so what we've done there is the dark bars represent, we're already at that. We're very close to that because we've issued those bonds. But then the hash marks, that is, those are non-issued bonds. That's for illustrative purposes, we're showing what we could issue in the future. So in reality, what would happen if we didn't do anything, the tax rate would drop down to $7.50. So we're really trying to target that 1950.
Okay. Now, what happens if the market crashes? What safeguards do we have? We don't know, just, I'm just concerned about safeguards.
Yes, safeguards are building in some cushion. And Julie, can you scroll to the bottom there so we can show what, there we go. So what we projected is 4.5% average AV growth per year. And so if we issued all the bonds, we would have to have that amount, you know, every year to be able to hit that without going above the tax rate promise. But what we're doing is we're only issuing a small portion of the amount of bonds that have been approved. And so there's a few things we can do. We can build in a little more cushion those early years, and we're going to certainly work to do that. But then the other thing is by only issuing the 60 million, we're well below the amount that we've shown here. And so that's another factor. Another thing that we're doing, you see how the blue lines taper off? And then you see that hash mark, hash marks don't exist yet, projections. By doing this every few years, we're able to recalibrate. And so let's say that we have another great recession, and we projected 4.5% assessed value growth. We're only over a tax rate for a year or two. We're not over it for the entire 25 or 30 years. And then when we come back, I'm having a conversation with you saying, hey, we had done projections at 4.5, and that didn't happen. So your voters actually paid $19.70. But now that we're issuing our next series of bonds, we're going to recalibrate to make sure that we're back below that $19.50. So the approach that your staff and you have taken is very prudent in that you come back every few years, and you don't try to do too much at once. And it allows us to recalibrate and make sure we're honoring this commitment to your taxpayers.
Now, Adam, based on your strategy, so that you believe that's the best strategy we can have with taxpayer, as trustees or fiduciary relationship to our voters, do you believe that's the best strategy we are at this moment based on the new COVID? I'm just very concerned with the market right now.
Yeah, so I really like, and Jason and I can run some additional scenarios, but one of the things we can look at is building in some extra cushion in these early years. So assume I could maybe a year with 0% AV growth. And given how conservative your plan is, I don't see any issues with that. But doing that and then doing this in phases like you have, I think that is the best approach for you, is lock in low interest rates, which you're doing. Get enough that you can spend within the next few years, and then give ourselves the ability to recalibrate every few years and then also build in some cushion in the early years, given we have some uncertainty here. I think if you take those four steps, you've done everything you can to continue building your projects, but also honor the commitment you've made to your taxpayers.
What penalties? I know we've paid a lot in penalties because we didn't, can you explain to the tech, to those in our community and our voters? I mean, I believe that's so important because these are millions of dollars that are coming, that we're investing in. I think the public needs to know that, too.
So in recent years, the district has really been prudent on a number of things. One is we, you've refinanced capital appreciation bonds, which are the bonds that have higher interest rates and defer it. You've used your new measure to essentially refinance that and get those lower. So to me, that was a very prudent move of the district to do. You've also been very aggressive about refinancing when you have opportunities like you've done, like we're looking at doing here. And so as far as penalties, I think in the last, you know, five to seven years, you've done just the opposite of that. You've been very aggressive about being conservative with the amount you issue, which I think when you talk about penalties, I think what you're referencing is a prior administration, a prior team had looked at issuing a lot of money upfront. And yes, there's some real investment limitations there, and you were, and taxpayers were paying for some bonds before the products were built. But like I said, over the recent history, you've been on a very good path of getting taxpayer savings and then locking in low interest rates when you've had that opportunity. So I would commend the staff and the board or the trustees for the way they've been managing these programs.
Thank you.
So is it okay if I go on to the next slide?
Chairman, yes.
Great, so on one of those refinancing opportunities that we've talked about here is, if you look to the left there, there are some highlights. One of the things I told you in the past is generally want to look at refundings where we can get a net present value percentage savings of 5%. Here, we're at 14.45%. And this is even if that bill that I've talked about does not go through. And so certainly positives, there's a, one thing to also look at is that negative arbitrage. I've talked a bit about this. If this number is too high, that means your refinancing is not that efficient, given the total amount of savings that we have here. I think this is a reasonable number to look at. But so here is your, kind of the debt service schedule and the savings that could be achieved by looking at the refinancing and combining it with your new money transaction. Next slide, please. Here is what that new money transaction looked like. So I told you there's a par amount of 60 million, and we have a project fund of about 59.5 million, and the other money goes to pay some of the cost of issuance. But you have a substantial amount for your projects. And then, you know, given the very high rating that you maintain.
Cost of issuance? I'm sorry for interrupting. What is the cost? Is it a percentage? That's very important.
So the cost of issuance is projected at 235,000, and the underwriter's discount is projected at 240,000. And so we'll continue to work with your, all your vendors and get that as low as possible. Those are projections that we have today. And most of them are not percentage based. The underwriter is percentage based. Some of the rating agents fees changed, or some of the fees changed based on paramount, but oftentimes they're not a strict percentage based number. So next slide, please. So what we've detailed here is our schedule. The district staff has already worked on doing some prep for your credit ratings. We're here before you, usually I say this evening, but this morning. And then we are hopeful to have a, some virtual credit presentations on July 20. And July 20, and then the pricing, we may wonder ourselves if that goes through. But that generally what we're showing here is a pricing around the beginning of August and then closing the middle to the end of August. And so the documentation for you this morning sets some parameters for the team to operate within. And then should you approve those, you've given direction to staff and the finance team to move forward as long as you're within those parameters. So that's my last slide, but I'm also available for any questions.
Could we get copies of this presentation, please?
You mean the PowerPoint?
Yes.
So I'm certainly happy to distribute to district staff a copy of the presentation for the entire, for whoever's interested.
I'm also curious to get an update of the present, presentation. A lot of people who are not in finance don't understand the credit rating. I think it would behoove us to tell the public that we are in, there is a website. Adam, it would be wonderful if you could tell people the website they could go about, the Desert Community College. It's a public entity where they tell you what municipalities, cities, and everyone are municipal pawn, are, you know, there's a website you can go to and see the ratings and how we're doing.
So the, I'm not, I'm not sure, but I guess there's, there is a website that folks could log on to. It's Emma under the MSRB site. So that will certainly get you there. There's a, there's a lot of other stuff you're going to find in here. But the district maintains very good ratings. You're in a double A category. Your budget looks very good. The fact that this board and the staff maintain those ratings make it so that the taxpayers get more bang for the buck. They, the investors loan at a lower rate because such high ratings. So they've done a very, the board and district staff have done a very good job of maintaining high ratings.
The reason why I mention that is that when we went to our training, we learned about Emma and how important that is for, because we are public servants, letting the public know where their money is going to cities, municipalities, and especially the Desert Community College District. I want to thank you for putting us in such a financial, compared to other community colleges, we're very well in our, when I got an email from someone about our Emma when they looked us up. So I'm very happy to report to my fellow trustees how important Emma is and to look at. Thank you.
Well, thank you for the opportunity.
Any other discussion on this item? President Kenneman, will you conduct a roll call vote?
I think, yes, sir. Student trustee Chavez Chides?
Yes.
Trustee Stefan?
Aye.
Trustee Perez?
Aye.
Trustee Wilson?
Aye.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Aye.
Trustee Yon?
Yes, motion carried unanimously. Item 13.05, which is a continuation. This is resolution number 071620-5 of the Board of Trustees of the Desert Community College District authorizing the sale and issuance of not to exceed $36 million aggregate principal amount of Desert Community College District general obligation refunding bonds in one or more series, approving the forms and authorizing the execution and delivery of one or more escrow agreements, bond purchase agreements, and continuing disclosure certificates, approving the form and authorizing a method for review and approval by members of said board of one or more official statements, and authorizing the execution of necessary documents and certificates and related actions in connection therewith. Do I have a motion to approve? Do I have a motion to approve resolution number 071620-5 as presented?
So move. Trustee Stefan.
Okay, second trustee Stefan.
Any discussion? And, you know, we, we heard this in our presentation. Any further discussions?
Yes. Okay. Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Just a quick question. Is, will there be a Zoom meeting on July 20? If so, where and whom? And will the trustees have, will be able to view it? Thank you.
That question is directed to whom?
Um, Kennaman, Dr. Kennaman.
All right.
Did we lose Adam?
Adam is here.
There was a question about the 20th meeting. And and how the, that is structured as far as the makeup of the meeting.
Oh, so, so as far as governing body approvals, this would be the last meeting or the only meeting required. The meeting with the rating agencies is typically the college staff to talk through kind of a prepared 40-page presentation with the rating analysts. So at this time, it wasn't anticipated that we would have the trustee members on, on that call. It would really just be a conference call with staff and the rating analysts along with our firm and underwriter.
No, no, I'm not asking about the trustees involved. I just want to know, can we ever go higher in our rating? Are we going to be ever, ever to do that? And if so, during that presentation, just to get an update to our board, part of the responsibility as an elected official is our fiduciary relationship in our bond to the community. So just want to make sure that we, you know, our, that can go in our website, Joel, on about our bonds. People do ask us in the community about the, that they pay every day for this bond.
Okay, okay. So thank, I'm sorry, I misunderstood the question. So you're in the high category. You're doing all the right things to move towards upgrades. The rating analysts are very hesitant to give upgrades right now because we have so much uncertainty out there. But your, your enrollment is growing. You've done prudent moves with reserves. You may have alternate revenue sources when you look at some of the things that you're, you're, you're doing. All those things are upward pressure. But right now, the COVID-19 is a big wet blanket on that, on that upward pressure. So I think maintaining our ratings in 2020 is priority one. And when we come back and do this again in 2022, 23, we see where we're at. And if we think we're in position to go for an upgrade, we go pedal to the metal for an upgrade then. But right now, they're going to be very hesitant to do upgrades.
Is there any other discussion on this item?
Yes, trustee Stefan here. Going through the information, the backup information that we had, there were pages missing in the preliminary official statement. And I'd like to be able to get those for, for future reference, to go back and update that if I could talk to someone after the meeting and possibly arrange that.
And this is Adam again. I might be able to help with that. The preliminary official statement oftentimes has, not often, it always has blanks and oftentimes has missing pages. It does, that's when we say preliminary, that, that's the preliminary element of it. Those numbers in details are not known until we can cross off that P and call it the OS, the official statement. That is what will eventually get posted on Emma as one of the other trustees was referencing. But you don't have, the trustees don't have to do it, Emma. This can get distributed to, to college staff and then distributed beyond that. But the official statement will be where there's no blanks and there's no missing pages.
I would like to receive the hard copies of, if my fellow board members, chairman of the, our Emma and give out the report to our trustees because that is part of our responsibilities as trustees, this type of our funding and especially our, the bonds we have.
We will note that when we get the official statement completed, I will put in a hard copy order and work with the college staff to know what, what quantity we want to do of that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? President Kennaman, will you conduct a roll call vote?
Certainly. Student trustee Chavez Chides.
Yes.
Trustee Stefan.
Aye.
Trustee Perez.
Aye.
Trustee Wilson.
Aye.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton.
Aye.
Trustee Yon.
Yes, motion carried unanimously. Item 14.01, resolution number 071620-1 to approve entering into General Childcare and Development Programs Agreement Number with California Department of Education to provide childcare and development services for children 12 months to three years of age and to authorize designated personnel to sign contract agreements for fiscal year 2020 to 2021. Do I have a motion to approve resolution number 071620-1 as presented?
So move, trustee Stefan.
Second?
Second, trustee Perez.
Any discussion on this item?
I think this is wonderful.
Go ahead, trustee Sanchez.
Okay. I think this is wonderful that we're having this through the Department of Ed. And I'm very excited to approve this for our general childcare and development programs, nationally awarded programs. Thank you.
And I just wanted to second that.
I'm very glad to see that we're moving forward with our child development because it's very much needed discussion during this time.
Any other discussion? Harry Nun, President Kennaman, will you conduct a roll call vote?
Yes. Student trustee, student trustee Chavez Chides.
Yes.
Trustee Stefan.
Aye.
Trustee Perez.
Aye.
Trustee Wilson.
Aye.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton.
Aye.
Trustee Yon.
Yes, motion carried unanimously. And continuation, resolution number 071620-2 to approve entering into California Preschool Program Agreement Number CSP 0378 with California Department of Education to provide childcare and development services and to authorize designated personnel to sign contract documents for fiscal year 2020 to 2021. Do I have a motion to approve resolution number 071620-2 as presented?
So move, trustee Stefan.
Do you hear a second?
Second, trustee Perez.
Any discussion?
All right, this is trustee Wilson. I just almost want to add to make sure that Diane Rossum stays at the helm because, and I know she will. She's done such an outstanding job providing and overseeing the childcare at our, at our college and satellite campuses. So just adding that, that comment, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to second that.
Thank you. Other item, discussion? President Kennaman, will you conduct a roll call vote?
Yes. Student trustee Chavez Chides.
Yes.
Trustee Stefan.
Aye.
Trustee Perez.
Aye.
Trustee Wilson.
Aye.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton.
Aye.
Trustee Yon.
Yes, motion carried unanimously. Our scheduled study session was completed as a part of action item 13.04. For future agenda items, any trustees, please submit any future agenda items you may have to the board secretary and they will be incorporated into the meeting minutes. I have notes on the item of the earlier item on the emergency declaration will be a future agenda item then. We are now moving into closed session at 11:54. Let's convene in, at this time, the board will recess to closed session, 11:54. The live streaming portion of this meeting will conclude. Should there be any reportable action, I will report to the board secretary, which will get incorporated into the meeting minutes and posted before the end of business today. It is 11:54. Let's reconvene in closed session at 12:05. So we are now closed. Thank you.